Okay, everyone, we're going to get started. This is our regular school board meeting of Tuesday, September 22, 2015. Welcome, everyone. And what I would like to do is ask Member Lefler Kemp to please call roll.
Sure.
Member Harla is excused. Member Johnston.
Here.
Member Murniky.
Here.
Chair Seligapunko.
Here.
Chair, or Member Welty.
Here.
Superintendent, or, excuse me, Member Westhong.
Here.
Superintendent Gronseth.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Amy Stosecki.
Here.
Deputy Clerk Bill Hanson.
Here.
Secretary Melinda Tebow.
Here.
Student reps, Mr. Guessens. And Tommy is not here yet.
He's excused.
He's excused. Okay, great.
Thank you. All right, will everyone please stand and join me in signing the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And could I move on to approval of the agenda, please? Could I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Member Murniky, seconded by Member Welty. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six-zero. And then, reading and approving of the minutes, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular school board meeting last month?
Move.
Okay, that's been moved by Member Murniky and seconded by Member Welty. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries also six-zero. And then, we have school and community recognition. Boy, we're getting to that really fast. So, will everyone, all the board members, please join me down on our floor and recognize our community members? Hold on, I'm going to get that. Is that on? Okay. Members of the board, this month, I am pleased to present representatives from the Duluth Link Crew and the Duluth East Hound Pack for recognition. With us tonight, we have from Denfeld, come on in. So, with us tonight from Denfeld, we have Tom Tuscan, Jill Lowfeld, Ed Lewis, Nick Anderson, Sean Fitzsimmons, and Jade Nelson. And from Duluth East, we have Kristen Warmanen, Becca Mon, Anna Karas, and Jake Miles. We know the transition from middle school to high school is a critical time for students. One way to help with that transition, to make that transition a smooth one, is to work, is through the work of groups like Duluth, I'm sorry, Denfeld Link Crew and Duluth East Hound Pack. These student leaders are trained to support incoming ninth grade students and ensure they get to a great start in high school. They help orient ninth grade students to school, inform them of activities and opportunities, make introductions, and assist them in different ways, making them feel at home. They help build a feeling of connectedness, serving as role models and mentors, and important information resources. The work of our Link Crew and Hound Pack students contributes greatly to the success That really makes a big difference, I know, a positive difference in our high schools. and well-being of our newest high schoolers. Many thanks to the outstanding student leaders and advisors for helping our incoming ninth graders experience a positive and productive start to the school year. Congratulations. All right, we are now going to move on to audience speaking. And just a reminder about the civility code and refraining from personal attacks. And Member Lefler Kemp, if you can read our mission, please. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This is our community vision. The purpose of Independent School District 709 is to provide a quality education that prepares all students for successful lives as global citizens in the home, community, and workplace. We will build on our shared beliefs and values of unity, high achievement, and responsible use of resources to create Duluth Public Schools and classrooms that are safe, supportive, and inclusive. We will work to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and the wider world.
Thank you. All right. Our first speaker is Erin Crowell.
Can you hear me okay? Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board, and thank you very much for this time for public comments. My name is Erin Crowell, and I live in Lakeside, Lester, with my wife and young daughter. I'm a part of a group called Duluth Parents for Healthy Playgrounds, and we are requesting removal of the shredded tire mulch from the school district's playgrounds. Tire mulch, also called rubber mulch, contains an array of toxic chemicals and compounds that may include arsenic, benzene, chromium, lead, mercury, and many others. Clearly, tire material was never designed for kids to play on and with in the first place. As our kids play, the tire mulch gets crushed up, ground with dirt, and tossed around. Residue and dust from the material gets on their skin, in their mouths, and probably into their lungs, too. While some studies estimate that the amount of chemicals that could get into a child is small, other research points out the potentially harmful synergistic effects of exposure to multiple chemical toxins over time. We do know that children are more susceptible to chemical exposures than adults because their bodies are smaller and still developing. Yet, we don't know nearly enough about how the variety of chemicals in tires could affect our kids' health in the short and long term. This may help explain why the Environmental Protection Agency and the Consumer Product Safety Commission have both withdrawn prior safety endorsements about ground-up tire products for children's use. Yet, despite clear evidence of marketing towards kids, the commission has not yet agreed to regulate tire mulch as a children's product, a unique label that would carry federally mandated strict lead exposure limits. We understand that Duluth and many other school districts began using tire mulch before some of this safety information became available. We are not looking to assign any blame, but work together to pick a suitable replacement material, such as engineered wood fiber, and make this change happen soon. Continued use of shredded tire mulch on school playgrounds amounts to a real-world experiment on the health of our children. The potential for exposure to harmful chemicals in scrap tires, the unique susceptibility of children to toxins, the lack of regulatory oversight, and the availability of alternatives make this experiment not worth the risk. We want to work with school staff and the board's business committee, and we also invite all of you and members of the public to, concerned parents across the district, to an informational meeting and discussion of possible solutions on Monday, October 19, 6:30 p.m., at Lester Park Elementary School. Together, let's figure out the necessary time, labor, and money to keep our kids both safe and healthy on our school playgrounds. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. All right, we're going to move on to, oh, is there more?
Is that what that says?
It says gadfly.
Okay. I guess this is Mrs. Stromgren. Since the court hearing from a federal judge, those of us who don't agree are called gadflies, so I've changed my name from R.C. Stromgren to gadfly. I want to thank Art Johnson for currently, recently dropping his lawsuit. I think it takes a person of character, although he's going to put out about $74,000 to defend himself. After this district has spent over $200,000 of taxpayers' money for what? Accusations. No real facts. And as the judge said, which one of the seven points wasn't First Amendment right? Declining enrollment with a growing achievement gap, especially in the community of color, lack of education for students, especially at Denfeld, coming in with no more than a fifth grade skills level, as reported by teachers earlier this year. Now, I observe on the third floor, since I'm a Salawati District Supervisor and our offices are up there, and I have been filming this project, how many thousands of dollars went into this collaborative center? When we had tables and chairs that were sold for pennies on the dollar at the old Central School when they had the auction earlier this year, as a contractor's wife, I know full well that that bench has got solid oak boards in it, oak plywood. It took a little bit of money to put it together. Can't imagine, must cost about, what, 12, 14, 15, $30,000 with padded seats, now new tables and chairs? I am really tired. I've seen my tax dollars so wasted, and especially when you're supposed to be in the business of educating our children, and these are our results. I look forward to some new faces on the board. I hope they have different voices and have a real goal in mind, to get back on track with what money should be spent on students and not on frivolous benches that are about 39 feet long and art glass on them, all for collaboration. Come on, I think we can do a better job. Mr. Gronseth, I'd like to ask for your resignation. I don't think you're competent to do the job you're doing.
Mrs. Stromgren, that is inappropriate, please.
And as a matter of fact, I have a right to speak on mine. There is no law against it. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to the report, or the reading communications petitions and the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. There are a couple of communications. One dated 9/1615, it was a letter addressed to myself and the school board from the Duluth Equestrian Club, thanking the school board for approving their club and expressing what it means to the club to be able to participate in a sport that is sponsored by their schools. I also wanted to point out that Mr. Crowell's letter to you was also at your spot when you came in today regarding the invitation to that meeting that he was referring to. So, we are very fortunate to live in a community that is very supportive of education and where education of children is a priority. And today, Maurice's, who is a great business in our community that was started right here in Duluth many years ago, held their Best Day Ever event. And employees from Maurice's traveled all over the city, giving back to the community, and that included visiting many schools and providing supplies. And I know that our schools are very appreciative of this program. Also, this month, second grade students at Myers Wilkins Elementary received a great surprise. There were free Duluth Pack backpacks that were courteously donated for free by an anonymous donor to all second graders at Myers Wilkins. And the backpacks, as you know, Duluth Packs are built to last a lifetime, and I would love to see pictures of these kids going off to college with their Duluth Packs that they've received in the second grade. Also, a great event, the Minnesota Supreme Court will be visiting Duluth. They'll be at Denfeld, where students from all over the region are invited to hear live oral arguments from a real court case right here in Duluth. So, there's an opportunity for the community to also spend some time with the Supreme Court justices. Those, it's at UMD, there's a community dinner hosted with the judges, and tickets for that event are available through UMD on the UMD website, and I believe they're $15. And then, you may remember hearing about our partnership with the school in Dalian, China. And this coming Monday, students from Dalian will be arriving in our schools. We've also arranged for them to partner with Two Harbors and Proctor, so some of their students will also be staying in those communities. So, they will be living with host families for about three weeks, and they'll be attending school here, and we're looking forward to their visit. And we're also beginning to plan for our students to have the opportunity to travel to China once again this coming spring. So, in addition to the Chinese students, we also have students who are visiting from Germany. And so, there are about 40 German students here in the community as well. Programs like these really provide our students an opportunity to develop a global perspective and interacting and getting to know people from another culture opens up a whole new world of possibilities for our students, and I'm glad that we're able to provide those kinds of opportunities. And our student reps have been in school now for a couple of weeks, anyway, and I know that Tommy was not able to be with us tonight because there is a big soccer game against Herman Town tonight, so, Mr. Guessens, it's all up to you.
There we go. But yeah, as Mr. Gronseth mentioned, that back to school, obviously, so everyone is kind of seemingly really excited and positive about it, and I know it kind of takes a bit to get back into school. I definitely know from personal experience, but it's definitely, it's a positive thing. There's good energy among all the students and all the teachers and everything, and that's, and that's really great. And what was really cool about the first week of school is that Executive Board plans different events, like a carnival and an assembly to end the week. And we even had this tunnel of people kind of on either side of the front doors, just kind of cheering and high-fiving people and basically just throwing candy everywhere and playing music and just kind of getting everybody all energized and ready for the first day of school and just kind of to kick off the whole week. So, that was, that was a lot of fun then. And you already, Hound Pack was already recognized, and that's always a huge thing in the beginning of the year because with all these new freshmen, it helps them acclimate to the new high school environment and everything. Other than that, sports have, fall sports have been happening. A lot has been happening with volleyball and football and soccer and things like that. That's been a lot of fun already this year, and swimming. And yeah, as people are also excited for the new Flexi schedule system that's being implemented to improve the what I need period, and that's, people are excited to start that and excited to see what kind of enrichment opportunities different teachers will be providing. With that, with the lunches and the restructuring, there is still some concern among students about crowded lunches and things like that, but yeah, mostly excited for the new win period. And then, just to hit a couple of upcoming events, in October, East, October is East for Peace Month. It's part of the entire Pride campaign. Each, different groups get one letter of each letter of the word Pride, and the first letter is P, and that's peace, and that's Executive Board's letter for the year, and it's focusing on peace for the entire month. So, throughout the whole month, we'll be having different events and things that ends with the Path to Peace Walk, which I know many of you, I think, attended last year. So, that's exciting to see that coming up. And then, next week is our homecoming week. Our theme is Hollywood, so different things with Hollywood and movies and Disney, Walt Disney Wednesday and things like that. So, yeah, it's been a good first couple of weeks of school.
Thank you very much, Jude, and I know we'll be looking forward to Tommy's report after the Supreme Court visits Denfeld as well.
Thanks. I love hearing about some of the things that are going on in our schools. Really positive starting out. All right, we're going to move on to the Education Committee meeting, and since Member Harla isn't here, we're going to have Member Lefler Kemp presented, please. Oops, you just turned it off. Okay.
Great, thank you. Well, we had a robust discussion in a quick two hours at the Education Committee meeting. We met the night of the primary election, so we had to stop at 6:00. But a lot happened in that short time, and so, I first want to move the Education Committee. We have some folks in the audience, there's a section in your handout if you've got that will kind of walk you through what I'm highlighting under the Education Committee report. We started out with some excellent presentations, again, from our staff, from a variety of staff, but the first one was with, from our two activity directors, Sean Rhode from East and Tom Pearson from Denfeld. And they shared information about the Why We Play initiative and shared a short video about this national initiative, which was launched by the Minnesota State High School League. And it has been shown to coaches, players, parents, and it really talks about the value and the purpose of high school sports and extracurricular activities. And I know an email went out to a lot of parent, or to parents across the district, so, parents who weren't able to attend some of the, where it was shown at both high schools could also watch it. And I just wanted to also just add, the Why We Play initiative, you can go on a website and learn more about it, but the Minnesota School Board Association also has endorsed this initiative to show support to our school leaders around education-based programs. And we received a handout called Why We Play with other background information as well. So, that was our first informational presentation. Our second informational presentation was by our two high school principals, Lori Knapp from East and Tanya Scogneres from Denfeld. And they talked about the process of how course offerings and programs are offered to Duluth East and Denfeld students for this coming year. And they really walked us through the process that started in February and started when students registered, and, and then through the time period before school started, then the principals and school staff really worked hard to make sure each student's schedules were really aligned with what their wishes were. And they're, they also really walked us through which classes are offered at East and Denfeld, and that, that there are, the same classes that are being offered both at East and Denfeld are, it starts that way. The classes that, there are a couple of classes that are offered at Denfeld that aren't offered at East and vice versa. All students have an opportunity to participate in some of our two-hour block classes, which include things like culinary arts and computer graphics. And, and at East, we offer CAD classes. At Denfeld, we have Fab Labs. I mention that because the Fab Lab is new and the same teacher for both, classes for both schools. We do provide transportation for these classes between schools. Both principals talked about the languages that are being offered at both schools, which include Spanish, German, Madron, and Ojibwe. And so, it was, I think, very informative in terms of kind of the process that principals use with students and the registration process. And we did, as part of that, had a discussion also about some of the zero-hour classes, about the desire for seven-period day. We talked about music programs as well at both schools, so there was discussion around those items as well. And then, the third informational piece was on the 2015 ACT assessment results. And thank you again, Tanya Lake, for the handouts that you put together to help us all make sense of the numbers. And again, for the audience, if you go to page, help me out here, page seven, all the way to the end, no.
Twenty.
Twenty. That's the section that really goes into the details of the ACT assessments for this year. And, and then the second, then the other piece that Dr. Tanya Lake shared with us is item number four, which is multiple measurement ratings or the MMR testings. And again, there's a big section on that that was, again, provided by Dr. Tanya Lake, and we went through it, and it gives more background information and kind of next steps. And so, I urge people to read through that. And, let's see. So, those were the main informational items. Would you like me to go on? Okay. And then, there's grant applications, and this has to do with ECFE and ECSE program, and it's a grant application that would sustain a parent support group, and it's been running collaboratively for the past four years. And with all of these, it's recommended that the Duluth School Board receive these items as informational.
Okay.
Okay. Excuse me? Okay. And then, under the action items, there's an agreement for data sharing, and this is something that we commonly do with other organizations, and the ones that this data sharing agreement is for is for UMD. It's Duluth Campus Upward Bound Program, the Minnesota Alliance with Youth, and then the University of North Dakota. And again, it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve this item. We have a couple resolutions and, okay, so, Resolution E-9153297, Acceptance of Grant Awards to the Duluth Public Schools. And again, it's on page 53. It's with the Northland Foundation, and would you like me to read that? Okay, great. So, Acceptance of Grant Awards to Duluth Public Schools, whereas Minnesota Statute 465-03 requires a school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full. And whereas acceptance of the grant in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described grant from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth here within. Be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various organizations. And again, it was listed, the Northland Foundation, it's Okay. And then, under the action items, there's an agreement for data sharing. And this is something that we commonly do with other organizations. And the ones that this data sharing agreement is for is for UMD. It's Duluth Campus Upward Bound Program, the Minnesota Alliance with Youth, and then the University of North Dakota. And again, it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve this item. We have a couple resolutions and, okay? So Resolution E-9153297, Acceptance of Grant Awards to the Duluth Public Schools. And again, it's on page 53. It's with the Northland Foundation. And would you like me to read that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, Acceptance of Grant Awards to Duluth Public Schools, whereas Minnesota Statute 465-03 requires a school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full. And whereas acceptance of the grant in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described grant from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth here within. Be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various organizations. And again, it was listed, the Northland Foundation, it's for our early childhood kindergarten transition program, and grant of $4,000 for the transition and alignment from early childhood to kindergarten. I move Resolution E-07153282.
Okay, it's been moved by Member Lefler Kemp, seconded by Member Murneke. Is there any discussion? Member Murneke, go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Tebow, at the bottom of the resolution, page 53, we have a number that's different than the one in our, in our education report. So which number are we, are we all right with this, or? Legally, there's no problem with having-
It's right here.
Yeah, I believe that E-9153297 is correct. I think you should have changed that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah, the resolution, okay. Is there any other discussion on this? Thank you for catching that, Member Murneke. So, we're going to vote on Resolution E-9-15-3297. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Member Lefler Kemp, do you want to continue with the rest of the report, please?
Sure. And then, let's see, this is the first reading for Policy 6140.10, Co-curricular Activities Participation Fees. It's on page 57. And it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve Policy 6140.10, Co-curricular Activities Participation Fees for the first reading.
Lacrosse.
Do we? For lacrosse, yes. Just for lacrosse.
Yeah, just keep them.
Okay. And then diploma request. The following students have met all graduation requirements for the Duluth Public Schools and should be awarded a diploma. Leopold Henick, Nelson Shadavag, Evan Joseph LaFontaine, Ryan Hilbert McDougall, Anessa Scott Milakovic, Tyler Robert Peldo, Hannah V. Sears, Bruce Wang, and Brayden G. Alef. It's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above diploma request. And then future items are listed there that we'll be discussing and getting presentations on. Again, I, I move the Education Report.
Second.
Thank you. And that's been seconded by Member Murneke. Is there any discussion on anything here? Member Welty?
Yes, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask. So could we withhold 1A2?
1A2?
Let's see, hold on, my other, no, no, 1, 1, 1A3, the ACT assessments, that's what I'm interested in.
The ACT?
Yeah, ACT, sorry.
Okay, that's it? Member Johnston?
1A2, 1A4.
That's it? Okay, let's go on to 1A2. Member Johnston, you have, Johnston, you have a question?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Just like to put a little more, had a lot of good discussion on that. There's some concerns that I have about that. I expressed it there, I want to express it again to the public. One is the, the actual art program or music program. Music was called an elite class. I find that somewhat odd terminology. About, we're also told about 33% of the kids in East take music. And about 10% of Denfeld kids take music. That's, that percent in Denfeld is getting worse due to the lack of feeder programs from our middle schools. Another issue is, Denfeld has more singleton, singleton classes. Result of that is that students have harder time scheduling. The more singletons, singletons you have, the harder, more likely that a student may get bumped out of their class of choice. Again, probably the main thing I hear from the Denfeld parents is, is class selection their students have. I think that we, as a board, have to look at reinstating seventh hour. We've talked about this in the past. I think that is absolutely imperative to do this time around on our budget. The only way to, I think, to deal with, with the curriculum issues that we've got is to reinstigate, or to reinstitute seventh hour. Most, I understand most schools, neighboring schools have it, I think we should be too. Again, it's not a discussion for tonight, but certainly like to have it in the future. Also, again, due to the parental concerns that we've got on scheduling, I have asked for a master schedule and enrollment on that from both the schools so we can actually compare. So when parents talk to us, we can have some data. So I have asked for that. I sent an email on that this afternoon to the Superintendent. And I think that we have a long way to go yet on our high school offerings and parity between East and West.
Student Representative Guusens?
I just want to make a quick clarification. You mentioned the elite music groups, and what they were referring to at the committee meeting last week were the Choraleers, the Sterling Strings, and the Jazz Band, at least at East. It's the three, it is like the most elite groups, the most selective, you have to audition to get into, and it's the hardest to get into. They're small groups of, of people that had to audition to get into those, and those are usually a zero-hour class. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks. Any other, oh, Member Murneke, go ahead.
And Denfeld has the Golden Singers, Little Mob is a-
Solid gold.
Solid gold. I call the Sterling Strings the Stagering Strings once in a while, too, so, and the jazz, jazz, they have a jazz band, and they're, they're called Elite up there.
Thanks for clarifying that. Member Welty?
Yes, I think it, it should be noted at this point that the zero hour was something that we did a fair amount of discussion about at the Education Committee meeting. And having Member Guusens note that zero hour is when a lot of these elite music programs take place, it's, it's worth making note, too, that zero hour is much easier for kids who have easy access to transportation and, and little more prosperous homes to get to. And of course, we know that there is a considerable disparity between our schools, and there are a lot of kids who don't have access to all of those benefits in Denfeld. And that may account for why so many kids there aren't able to take advantage of, of the zero hour. So that, that will constantly be a, provide an incentive for us to try to find some way to, to bring that kind of equity to the children at the Western schools.
Member Lefler Kemp?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, when you're, when you're giving these reports, you don't always know when you should inject your own personal opinion here. But I, I think what I got out of the discussion that we had and why we asked to have Principal Scogneres and Principal Knapp at the meeting to talk about the registration process was to help us all as board members understand what the process is and to understand, from each school perspective, what's being offered and what isn't being offered, and, and what we're providing transportation for. And, and, you know, as I highlighted, we did have additional discussions around the seventh-period day and music programs. And I really saw that Education Committee as an, this, this item on it as an opportunity for us to move then to the discussions we will be having through the winter on our budget on these items like the seventh-period day. And so I really appreciate it, I know as a school board member, getting accurate information from the principals who actually are doing the scheduling with their staff and, and making sure we all were clear on the process that is being used at both schools and can get that accurate information out to parents as well and not just what we think is happening. So, you know, I just, Tanya was here earlier, I appreciated both Tanya and Lori spending the time they did with us.
Member Westholm?
This topic is near and dear to me, having spent thousands of hours and 17 years in high schools, scheduling high schools. And I know amongst other principals, the smaller the school becomes, the more singletons you're going to have. And the more singletons you have, and you want to have those singletons, even, you know, if we, one example, if, if we're promising kids, starting a language in the eighth grade, Spanish one, whatever it might be, what we're saying to them is that if you want to continue that language through eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade, you have the potential for getting into the fifth-year study of that course. And of course, again, depending on the size of the school, by the time you get to fifth-year Spanish or fifth-year German or whatever it might be, you generally have a smaller population. So what do you do if you have 16 kids at East or, or Denfeld that have Spanish five or German five? Are you going to say, well, the class is too small now, so we can't offer it? You can't say that. You're going to offer it, and of course, that is going to have an impact if you're, if you're scheduling your school, if you have a, for example, a 28-to-1 staffing ratio, you know, making that one class smaller is going to have an effect overall on the remaining courses that you're scheduling. So it gets to be a pretty complex issue. I, I would like to, and Member Johnston and I are maybe going to incur some, some negatives about this, but I, I agree with him that, that we need to examine our, having a seventh hour again. You know, again, having scheduled buildings and, and for all these years, you know, the more periods you have, the more flexibility you have in getting some of these single courses in. And generally, those are the, by the time kids get to the upper-level courses, it's not always that, but, you know, for example, Honors Biology or Honors Chemistry, or in the case of my son, when he went through Denfeld, he had two years of Advanced Chemistry. And they were pretty much singletons, especially the second year. And he had, I don't know how many, he had jazz band, he had all these things, he had a bunch of singletons. And so if we, if it had been a sixth-period day, there's no doubt he would have had to make some even harder choices on things that he probably couldn't take. But that does, I know from a fact that that gives us more flexibility. Now, I also recognize it's more expensive, and that's one of the considerations in, in dropping the seventh-period day, is it does cost more. But again, I think it's worth taking a look at that again. You know, it, there, there are some, definitely some advantages, not only for the college-bound upper-level kids, but for all students, whether they're high achievers or struggling students, because more, more and more of those kids are taking classes that are often singletons. Even, even the kids who are struggling, they don't necessarily have multi-section courses. And so you have to fit what they have to take, and, and it gets tougher and tougher to do that. So, I'm done.
Thank you. Superintendent, go ahead and address that.
Thank you. I did want to talk about the seventh-period day a bit. You know, I've had the experience with both the seventh-period and the sixth-period day. And there's some districts that have a, a four-period day, and, and they go with a block schedule. And I just want to make sure that we are open to more creative solutions than just, just looking at the seventh-period day where there are schedules available, where kids sign up for seven or eight courses and have five or six periods, but they don't have every course every day, more like a college schedule. I am not saying that there's any one perfect answer to that, but I think that we have to keep our minds open to more creative solutions that, that are being successful across the country. I did want to point out that although there are districts around us that have a seventh-period day, I think if you looked at their course offerings, they offer far fewer courses than, than we are able to here in Duluth. So there are some trade-offs whenever we're looking at different kinds of schedules and how many periods we have in a day, how many courses we offer. And I think it all comes really down to the question of what do we want our kids to know and be able to do when they graduate from a Duluth high school? And what kind of opportunities do we want to provide? Once we have those answers, then we can look at more creative solutions and, you know, not always look at the way it used to be, but maybe the way we want it to be for our students in the future.
Member Johnston?
Sure. Great discussion. Thanks, Member Westholm and Member Welty, for, for bringing up the same issues that I've got. And thank you, Mr. Guusens, for correcting my terminology there. Appreciate that. But, you know, Denfeld, we do, we have, have lost things like, for example, a chamber orchestra. And those are things that I hear from parents over and over again. I, you know, the zero hour, we talked a lot about it. Is the seventh hour an answer? I don't know. I'd like to, and certainly hope that the discussion will happen. I understand back in 2003, maybe Member Welty can shed some light on this, that this one, we went from a seventh hour to a sixth hour. And I'm assuming it was done to save money. I think that with the referendums that have passed, with the money we have, I don't think that money should be an issue anymore, you know, to, to put that back if we think it is going to actually help. So again, thanks, hope, looking for the discussion in the future.
Member Westholm?
I thought of one more thing. One of the other reasons that there's sometimes differences in those, in those upper-level type kinds of classes, or any kinds of classes, but especially classes, if we want to call it that, is that each building may have teachers who have a specific training or specific interest in a certain area, and they may be able to offer a course, and if they're at Denfeld, Denfeld may be the only one that's going to offer that. And East is the same situation. So sometimes the particular staff you have in a, in a building also allow you to offer certain courses that the other building may not be able to offer because they may not have the staff for that particular kind of training. So that was something that I, I know I dealt with at both Central and Den, and Denfeld when I was scheduling. So I think that's true at East, too.
Okay, thanks. We're going to move on to 1A3. Member Welty?
Yes, we had another, another extensive discussion. And this had to do with the, the ACT test results. I guess, I guess I should qualify that by saying we, we happened to schedule this meeting at a regular time, which also happened to be a primary election day, and the primary election requires us to close our meetings at 6:00. And for a lot of very serious subjects, it meant that they were, they were short-changed, and this is one of the ones that I probably would have liked to have talked more about. Dr. Lake, I do have one question. Somebody pointed out to me something that hadn't occurred to me during your presentation. We had a rather extensive conversation about the fact that all of the juniors took the ACT, except I think six of them, just a handful. And that was courtesy of the state of Minnesota. The state legislature deemed that all the juniors should, should take the test. This year, I don't know how many years we're going to get the state's help with the juniors. And that didn't register with me, apparently, because I, I had somebody else point out to me, it was Atlanta Oswald, that while that was true of the juniors, the state did not pay for the, the seniors. That wasn't what the state was interested in finding out about. So I had assumed that all, all the information I was looking at somehow included both all of the seniors and all of the juniors. Can, can you tell me approximately what percentage of our seniors took the test that they, they had to fork money over to pay, which would be a good incentive or disincentive to take the test? Do you know what the, the proportion was that took it?
Okay, so the two data sets that I talked about at the meeting was the graduating class of 2015, which is the typical data set that I talk about each year. We do have comparisons. We have trend data for both the state and national level. And that's always been an optional test for seniors, juniors to take on their own, and it is at their own expense. Last year was the first year that our state of Minnesota paid for all juniors to take it. So our, our junior class, we had nearly 100% of our students take it. For the graduating class last year, it was nearly 50% of our students that took it.
I, I'm a bad button pusher. I, I push too quickly, and I can't tell you how much grief that gives me when I'm on my cellphone. I was interested in, in, in looking at a comparison that's not, not provided, and, and I'm not sure that it would be the most useful comparison with, with a population of 50% having taken the test in one grade and a- percent having taken the test in one grade and a nearly a hundred percent in the next. It would have been interesting for me to see what the, the, what, how the juniors and seniors compared on the, on the different subject areas, English, algebra, social science, biology. And I don't know if you could provide that at some point in the future, and I'm not completely sure exactly what that would, would show me. But I would like to have some sense about how students are progressing from year to year, and that might be a graph that you could, you could show me at some point in the future, which despite the fact that there's a fifty percent difference in the number of people who took it, might, might be useful to me as I sit down and think about the progress our kids are making.
Sure. If you look on page eleven of the presentation, that shows how our students did at the graduating class of 2015, how they did in each of the subject areas. That same graph is also shown on page seventeen for the junior class that took it. So it's the same, looking at the same data in the same way, so you do have that comparison in the presentation.
Go ahead, Superintendent, go ahead.
No, I have a question. So the, the data on the graduating class, however, on page eleven, they took that, could have taken it two or three times, starting as a junior and possibly as a senior? So it's not truly the seniors that took that test? It's, they took it as, some took it as juniors, some took it as seniors, some take it multiple times.
Yeah, it's regardless of when they took it, it's the graduating class last year. So that data set. And then the other data set were, would be our graduating class this year in 2016. As Mr. Gronseth said, our graduating class of 2015, they could have taken it several times. And the way that ACT calculates it, this was a surprise to me, but what they use for that graduating class data is the most recent administration of the test, so for a particular student. So if you have a student who took the test three times, even if their first test was their highest score, it's the third time that gets rolled into this data set.
Member Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Getting back to that discussion, I think we have to be a little careful comparing the actual graduating class taken, because only fifty percent of them took it. We're assuming more college-bound students took that, and making that assumption, again, that they may have higher scores than non-college-bound students, so I don't think we can compare that. Really, all of the data is the same, but it's certainly a different set of students taking it. There was a couple other things that I was going to ask Dr. Lake. You mentioned during the, during the committee meeting that East High School had a composite score, twenty-four point three, and Denfeld had twenty point nine. I'm assuming that was a graduating class, or was that the juniors?
I guess I'd want to double-check that before I answer. Yeah, I remember you asking the question, and I had both data sets with me, so I'm just not sure which one that was offhand.
Yeah, okay, yeah, no, if you could do that. And also, Dr. Lake is getting some other information for me, so thank you for getting that together, and we'll, I'm sure we'll have another chance to talk about it. But whichever one it is, again, the disparity between East and Denfeld is, twenty point nine is actually below the national average, twenty-four point three is above the national average, in looking at the chart on page nine. So it's, again, it's a concern on the test results, whether or not it's graduating or the junior class. Would like to point out on page thirteen, again, this is a graduating class, and some things that concern me is the first row on that column, which is black African-Americans. Though they make up almost nine percent of our student population, only three percent of those students took the ACT test on, as graduating seniors. Again, that shows that we have to do better work. It shows that I think our expectations for kids of color are not where they should be. And the other, the other groups of color, like Native American, Hispanic, and Asian, there were so few took those that we couldn't even put them down, because they were below the ten cohort group. So that's probably even, certainly has a lower percent on those as well. It's something that we, again, we have to look at. We know we have an achievement gap, but this is, yet again, you know, but I would like to emphasize again that overall, some of our scores were above the national average for the people that took it. That's certainly a positive thing. We also have to look at more of the negative stuff as well. Back on page sixteen, the chart there, this is where, again, we get, this is, this is now, this is going back to grade eleven now, and this is where almost all the students took it, so we can kind of compare apples to apples here. Again, the, the composite score is for blacks is fourteen point eight, composite score is for whites is twenty-one point one. Again, something that we, as a school, have to look at. We're not unique, but I think that still we have to look at that, and this shows how important making sure we have expectations and opportunities for all our student groups is, making sure that's one way to, to get that. I know that's one of the superintendent's missions here, that he indicated a couple weeks ago, that achievement gap is certainly one of his objectives, is certainly mine as well. On page twenty-two, just a review, oh, oops, we're going back to the next section. That's all I had for that. Again, my concern, again, that we have to do better with all of our students, our East versus the West, as well as our kids of color.
Superintendent.
Yeah, I just wanted to pop in with, when you were talking about the percentage of students in each group who are taking the test, that, that's, that's really one of the reasons that we do want all of the kids to take the test. They, you know, we did take it last year, and this year, the expectation is that all the students would be taking it again, so, you know, we, we shouldn't see that, that low percentage, because we're making it possible for all kids to take the test.
Thank you. Member Lefler Kemp.
Sure. I had a couple questions, but I think you answered them on, on one of the charts. But we had a really great discussion on why ACTs, what is the role of ACTs, and Mr. Goosens, I really appreciated your perspective as a student on that, and the importance of it, not just for getting into college, but the importance of it for scholarships. And, you know, I certainly know, as a parent of three high school kids, that some took the test multiple times, and, and certainly needed it to get into college, and needed it for their scholarships that allowed them to go to college. And so I appreciated that discussion we had about the important role that ACTs can play for students. I was hoping, Dr. Lake, that you could maybe just highlight, I could try and interpret it, but I think you're best at that, on page eighteen, just the recommendations going forward, both the ACT recommendations, as well as the legislative updates, which might put some perspective on this as well.
Sure. It's really important that we increase the access to ACT, so all students can take it, that there aren't barriers for our students, and we are working on a plan for that again, so that all of our eleventh-grade students will have that same opportunity to take the ACT this spring. Also, making sure that our students are taking the core or more, meaning that they're taking their full years of English, full years of science, full years of, of mathematics. Also, making sure that they're taking those challenging courses early, and that we're making our courses as rigorous as possible. Also, just emphasizing the importance of college and career readiness activities, and beginning those early as well. And then just in terms of the legislative updates, we will continue to offer that to all eleventh-grade students. We'll be doing that again in April, so we're beginning our planning for that now. Although it's no longer a graduation requirement, it's strongly encouraged, and we are expecting all of our eleventh-grade students to participate.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Goosens, go ahead.
Yeah, just a really quick question. With the, with next year being, like, hoping to have it be the same as, as this past year, for everyone to be able to take it, is, would that mean that next year's or current juniors, their data set will be comparable adequately to last year's?
Yeah, so we'll have two sets of junior classes that we'll be able to look at side by side.
Okay, and then that'll just kind of continue indefinitely?
Yeah. Actually, not necessarily. It is covered for one, one more year by the state of Minnesota. The cost is covered.
Okay.
Okay. Member Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, the ACT test is good. We had a lot of good discussion on that. And an ACT is something that students have to have to go on to college, and encouraging them to do that, and actually, last year, to actually pay, or they didn't have to pay for, if I understand it right. That's, that's certainly good. The only, not a problem, but the concern that I've got, I guess, is that we have so many tests. We have the ACT, we have the MCA, we have the AYPs, and, not the AYP, okay, well, AYP is in the MMR, so wherever that test score comes from, they do use AYP. So we have a lot. Now, maybe we could take, solve that by having the ACT and not having the MCA, for example. Seems like we get a little more bang for our buck out of the ACT. And we know, and I always bring it up, because I have a lot of concern about some of the achievement gap and whatnot, all these tests show the same thing, that we do have an achievement gap, and we don't need another test to show us that, yes, we have an achievement gap. I would rather have that energy somehow put into dealing with the achievement gap and working on that, rather than just giving another test to say that, to say that, yeah, we have it. So, yeah, I know the ACT is important, and I appreciate Mr. Goosens's statements on that, but maybe my concern is that we're, we're testing too much and not solving some of the problems that testing is resolving.
Okay, I'm going to ask our curriculum director to talk about that, because I know these tests are mandated, so.
The piece that I wanted to talk about, I'm sorry, I was thinking about what I was going to say and how to frame it properly, so we might have to reframe the question, because I didn't hear all of Mr. Johnston's comment, if I'm being honest. The point I wanted to clarify is, we often hear people refer to the ACT, saying you need it to get into college, and the point I want to clarify is that while many four-year universities require the ACT for entrance, there are other universities that set different requirements, and that also, a lot of our two-year colleges, which also have very valuable, very lucrative career options for students, do not require the ACT for entrance or admittance. So I just want to make sure that when we're having this conversation, because it does frequently get referred to as that this is a test you need to take for college, that it's clear for families, and it's clear for the community, that when we say the ACT, that's usually for four-year universities, and that's not the only test they'll take, and it's typically not required for two-year college entrance. So just wanted to make that point of clarification.
Thank you. Member Lefler Kemp.
Thank you for clarifying that. I just wanted, Dr. Lake, to just speak a little bit. Again, this was part of our discussion last week, but I think it would be good for the public to hear about kind of ways that we prepped students and families last year, and what we're hoping to do again this year, just so people understand how we're working within both schools.
Last year, we started communicating early with families. We had a pretty in-detail communication plan that we followed, and week by week, we put out more and more information as we, as we went. We've started that planning even earlier this year, so that we can get the word out to families and students. I know that our high schools did a nice job during win time with some preparation activities. I also know that some of our content teachers use some of the preparation activities in their courses to help gear the students up for the kinds of questions, or the kinds of, the higher-level thinking that they would need to be doing for the ACT.
Member Welty.
Yeah, I'm taking a quick look at something that intrigues me. I guess my first, first question is going to be, why did the state want to mandate this? I guess the obvious answer for the eleventh graders, the obvious answer is they were wondering, you know, how many twelfth, eleventh graders looked like they might be college material after they got through their, their twelfth-grade year. Tell me if this thing that just has dawned on me, as I've compared the graph on page nine with the graph on page sixteen, if, if, if I've got this right. I'm looking at the last year on page nine, 2015. This is for the graduating class of 2015, which we've been told only half of the students took the test, and presumably the most college likely. That shows that of, in the district, all students, the, the score for all students in the, the fifty percent that took the test was twenty-three point three. That's, I've got that right? Well, I'm very heartened when I take a look at page sixteen, and now tell me if I'm, I've got this right. According to that, the first line, all students, the composite scores of all students of one year younger, in which one hundred percent took the test, it shows that they achieved a score one, one year before they, with one more, one more educational year to go, of twenty point, looks like three percent. That suggests to me that if a hundred percent of our juniors took that and achieved a twenty percent compared to the, only fifty percent of the most college-ready seniors who got three points more, that's not damn bad. That's not too damn bad. And it suggests to me, what I think I've been hearing you and some others say, is that maybe a lot more of our, our kids who are juniors should be thinking about the possibility of college, and those two columns for the two different grades suggest to me that there's a lot more potential college material, not that that's the be-all and end-all for kids who graduated from high school, but I, I think, I think that's pretty impressive. I mean, that's, that's a hundred percent of the junior class, minus six.
Superintendent.
Just one, one quick little correction on that. It's not, it's, it's not percentage, it's composite score. So twenty percent wouldn't be very good, but, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, the composite score is what the colleges look at. You get thirty, and that's great for most colleges. Twenty-five's not bad either, I know. If you're a college, you're a...
High school senior looking to get into a good college, you're paying real close attention to those. So twenty, twenty may not get you into Harvard, but it doesn't mean you're not college material.
All right. We're going to move on to 1A4. Member Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Another, one of our testing, my favorite topic is testing. It's also one of my favorite things, when I did, when I took all these tests. One of the, oops, I haven't got the right page yet. One of the goals, and I don't know if you know, Dr. Lake, was to reduce the achievement gap, and that's one of the measurements in MMR, by fifty percent, which is in the year sixteen, seventeen, which is one year, and I know that's a state goal. And I didn't get a chance to look at their spreadsheets, but do you know how the state's doing on that? That's a tough question. I can, I wasn't expecting you to answer, because I don't know it either, but I thought maybe you'd looked at it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's pretty similar to what we're seeing, in that we have some groups and some subjects that are really gaining some good ground quickly, and then we have others where the gap has remained the same, or in some cases, has widened.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's a goal, and we got one year to make it, the state here, I don't think we're going to make it, but I guess I should keep my fingers crossed. Going back on page, oops, there's no page... Going back on page, oops, there's no page numbers on this, or maybe there is, maybe it's 35. This is the MMR results. One of the things that I, I look at, and I bring this up all the time because I think it's a major issue, is some of the differences on the MMR and the focus rating between east and west schools. For example, on the MMR, Denfeld is 50, East is 71. It's really, really quite significant. And the focus rating, which has another slightly, or very different measurements, of course, Denfeld is 23, East is 56. Again, pretty, pretty, pretty worrisome to me. When we can, when we look at the elementary schools, I just ran the numbers real quick. The east elementaries are averaging about 71 MMR, west elementaries averaging 35. In focus rating, east elementaries are averaging 74, west elementaries are 43. These scores are the raw scores, I don't know where that whole significant there in percentage here, but it's obviously quite a bit. One of the things, this is a technical question for Dr. Lake, but when I started going through some of the MDE spreadsheets, it looks like the, one of the big differences in, in the actual focus rating is our focus proficiency. Denfeld and Lincoln Park got zeros in the focus proficiencies. The good things were, they, they did say that we had made a, a progress in the achievement gap, which was good, but we got a big zero on that. And I know this is a technical question, we'll have to get our spreadsheets and look at it, but looking at this focus proficiency on your chart, on focus rating is proficiency rating minus all in white groups. In other words, looks at the percentage of subgroups that made the AYP target, reading and math. So that's, indicates to me that our kids of color did not perform as well and did not meet the AYP in reading and math. Do you think that's an accurate reading of the spreadsheets?
Yes, it is correct. When we look at focus proficiencies, we're looking at our specific groups of students and what percentage of those groups met their AYP targets. And remember, AYP targets are the targets that increase each year, and for our students who are in our student groups, like our students of color, our students who qualify for free and reduced price lunch, our students who qualify for special education services, their targets are increasing at a much greater rate than for our students who are white or not qualifying for free and reduced price lunch, because it's all about closing the achievement gap. So their targets are much, in some cases, higher, but in all cases, they're accelerated. So it's, that's the only way we're going to close a gap, and what that's saying is that for the schools that you had just mentioned, those specific groups didn't meet those rigorous AYP targets. And it may be that they, you know, didn't meet it by a long way, or it may be that they didn't make it by a student or two, and in some cases, that is what we're seeing.
Yeah, thanks. So that's what I thought, just wanted to get your confirmation there. And again, focus rating, there's two things, focus proficiency as well as the achievement gap, those are the two, the two measurements that go into that. And so, again, looking at that, I think it's important to note here that we did make some slight progress in the achievement gap, which was, which I thought was interesting. Unfortunately, the other one knocked us down, that's why they don't look as good.
Yeah, the other thing I forgot to mention that I think is important to remember, too, is that some of our schools on the eastern end of town don't have some of those subgroups to even look at. So if you're looking at a focus proficiency of what percentage of our student groups met AYP targets, some schools don't have, maybe they have one, maybe they have special education, but maybe they don't have the diversity. So there aren't as many targets to meet, in a sense.
Yeah, no, I understand that. And that's certainly, you know, how they do that. They don't say they have the, the, the raw scores, like, on the focus rating maximum, or out of 50, and then they look at that, number comes up out of 50. And those two things, one, the focus proficiency, proficiency, and the other one, the achievement gap, and they don't say exactly where they got that, they don't on the spreadsheet, there's just a big fat zero there, which is kind of discouraging. But, you know, obviously, it does say something, though, that East, even though they have smaller subgroups, they managed to get a score on where Denfeld and Lincoln and some of our other elementary schools did not. And that's where we really got knocked down, at least on the focus rating. On the MMR, it was kind of a similar thing. I looked at that and seen, again, Denfeld and East, Lincoln or Dean, as I said before, they're always, they're quite, quite, quite poor. Again, that also, the achievement, the gap is also one of the measures in the MMR. And where it looked like we got down, where we really got hammered real hard, was in the proficiency growth. That's where we really hit it, again. And now, and the MMR is not broken down by, by subsets or by, for example, African Americans, Native Americans, it looks like everybody. But again, that's lots of good data there, even though I don't really like the, looking at this data over and over again. I'm hoping somehow we can use this data to implement some, some dramatic change, because we, we, so we need to get something. I would, I did find a document, I'm going to, you know, it's going to tie up the MMR and maybe some of the ACT in my concerns. I got a document when I, at the last NAACP meeting. This is a document titled Race, Culture, and Achievement Gap, and it said, a couple of really interesting statements on that, is question number four, what was the most important issue that, to you, that emerged during the summit? This was a summit held at Lincoln Park. The answer was a clear top, top topic that emerged pertaining to the needs of the school staff to be educated and/or trained on issues and effects of racism and cultural differences of students. Another question was, do you feel the issues identified and addressed during the summit will lead to change? Answer was, a two-to-one racial people believe change will happen. Those that doubt that only say so because of past experience where nothing happened. The, the interesting thing about this document is dated 2005, and I don't think we've made much progress on any of these things since 2005. Also, the author of this document was Alana Oswald, back in 2005. Thank you, Ms. Oswald. I think this is something we've looked, we've been talking about this for 10 years. We haven't made much progress. We, we know what's there, but we have to do better.
Member Loeffler Kemp.
Yes. One of the things I really appreciated about our discussion at the Education Committee about this set of testing was how you really were clear with us on kind of the role that this testing kind of helps play with our future work as well. And so, can you talk a little bit about page 36 for the audience, kind of next steps, and then also how that we are, you know, how this data's communicated with the principals and with our instructional coaches, and how we're using it. And we did make an investment as a district in instructional coaches, and, and this is one of the pieces that, of their work, that's really important to what we are doing. And so, could you speak, that's kind of a long question, but can you speak towards that?
Sure. The MMR and the focus rating data that I shared with you at the Education Committee, I, I think it's important to be clear about that the, the ratings that we have, that I reported at the Education Committee, are based on the test scores, the same tests that I reported on the month prior. So what this really is, is using that data in a different way, crunching the numbers in a different way, using specific formulas, and, and really the purpose is to rate schools. So one of the things that we do is we get the data right away from the state. We, you know, we send it to principals, we work with principals on understanding what it means, but probably the most meaningful data is the data that is underlying these calculations. So, which are the state test scores, which is one small piece of the data puzzle, and we're looking at how our students are doing. That's kind of the year-end, you know, you've heard me refer to it as the autopsy data. It's like, you know, you get it, and those students have moved on. So we really are more reliant on our ongoing data to help us determine if our students are on track for proficiency toward the end of the year. So we really put a focus on, on those kinds of sorts, or those kinds of tests. And also, you know, our teachers are working really hard right now. We're building common assessments across our curriculum areas so that we can see how our students are doing at any given time across teachers. The teachers are meeting together in those professional learning communities to talk about ways and how they can help increase student skills at that time, rather than at the end of the year when it's, it's almost too late. So this ends up being more of a confirmation of what teachers are, are gauging throughout the school year.
Thank you. Dr. Carey, did you want to add something?
Well, there are a couple pieces. One is, you spoke specifically about the instructional coaches. And the instructional coach's role, as it currently sits, is to work with any of our staff who, who are wanting or in need of additional coaching. They've been focusing their effort primarily on our new teachers in the district. So our brand-new teachers coming into the profession, they've been connecting with those teachers and working on classroom practices that research proves have a high impact on student achievement. So we're trying to make sure that we take all of our newest teachers to the profession and provide them with as much support and training as we can to make sure they're going to be effective. But to piggyback on what Dr. Lake has just mentioned, I think it's our district, one of our district goals, I think is fair to say, I mean, I don't know that it's formally written, but that we are implementing PLCs to a point where we are taking a look at individual students on a regular basis to determine whether or not they're learning the things they're supposed to learn as they're supposed to be learning them. So not waiting until we have these tests that come back six months later, but we're doing it in real time. That's an extremely complex thing to get set up, and it's extremely complex to make sure that we have, you know, 600 teaching staff and hundreds of other support staff all understanding that system, and all understanding their role and part and how they fit in that system. That's the work we're working towards. It's a multi-year process, and I, I mentioned this and talked about this, I think, last spring, and it's something that we're continuing to focus on. We just had a meeting today with representatives from Solution Tree, who are actually one of the global leaders in high, high effect, or highly effective PLCs, looking at ways that we can continue to move to support our staff towards getting to that level, where they're looking at every student, regardless of race or SES, or any other factor, and making sure that they're learning what we intend them to learn.
Thank you. All right. Member Walte, one final comment. Go ahead.
I just have one. I'm going to have a gripe, but I want to precede it by making a very positive comment. This is one of the few school board meetings since I've been here where we have spent a lot of time on the education agenda, and I must say, that is a very welcome change. Having said that, I'll just get my one little gripe. And it kind of has to do with, with my experience the last year and a half, how things have come to the board. A little too often, for my taste, big chunks of data have showed up at the committee meetings, and the, and the testing is, is one of those things. And I'm the sort of person that likes to look carefully at the data so I can kind of think it through and, and come up with questions, so that I can ask questions kind of intelligently. And we've, we've had a very healthy discussion about that testing today. In fact, I, I think it's been rather prolonged. Maybe some of you feel we've had a rather long discussion about this. I would just recommend that in the future, when we can, when we've got a lot of serious, difficult-to-digest information, if it could be provided to us in our packets beforehand, so that those of us who are data geeks can pour through it and, and prepare our questions, rather than try to formulate them as a presentation is being made with, with a PowerPoint. I, I think that would help some of us, and, and had we been able to do that, considering the fact that we were forced to close at 6:00, if we had been able to do it and had a more expensive, extensive conversation, we, we might have had a somewhat shorter session on the Education Committee meeting today at the school board meeting.
Well, and Member Walte, we do receive a lot of this by email, but also, you have a whole week. Just after you receive everything, you can always ask any one of our, you know, email the staff your questions, too. So we do have that capability. You want to say something? Oops. Okay, quit turning it off. Okay.
Yeah, that's always the intent, is to have it to you as soon as I have it ready. As you know, it does come in big chunks, and it does come all at once. So the MMR and the ACT, they weren't spaced at all. They were all coming at once. So, so what I tried to do is make sure that you have the high-level summary information that same day before our staff get it, before the newspaper gets it. And then I need to take the time to make sure that I can dig through it myself and provide a comprehensive and thorough report for you at the Education Committee.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and vote on the entire Education Committee report, minus the resolution that we approved already. All those in favor of the Education Committee report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously, 6-0. Okay, we're going to move on to the HR report. Member Murneke, go ahead.
I can't imagine this taking any more, any more time, but I've been fooled before. Staffing Report Actions, page 2. Certified Appointments, 22. Certified Extensions, 8. Certified Leaves, 3. Certified Long-Term Sub, 1. Certified Summer School Positions, 7. Non-Certified Appointments, 17. Non-Certified Extensions, 2. Non-Certified Permanent Decrease, 1. Non-Certified Permanent Increase, 1. Non-Certified Resignations, 4. Non-Certified Retirements, 5. Non-Certified Temporary Decrease, 1. And Non-Certified Temporary Increase, 2. We have a placeholder for the approval of Policy 4180, workload limits for certain special education teachers. Again, this was developed along with the Minnesota Education Department and our Minnesota School Board Association. We had a discussion on that. I move. Oh, and the, and the placeholder is still on hold, number 2A is still on hold. So I move the Human Resources Report.
Thank you, Member Murneke, and it's been seconded in by Member Loeffler Kemp. Is there any discussion on the HR department? Member Johnston.
Three.
Okay, go ahead.
Sure, I just wanted to, we had a slight discussion on this. Just telling the group I'm voting against this. I don't want to go into it. I think this, I've read through this, and there's almost nothing in this. I don't think we should be passing something just because some rule says we're supposed to pass it when it doesn't include anything.
Okay, we're going to vote, vote now on the entire education, or Human Resources Committee report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that carries 5-1, with Member Johnston voting against it. Okay, we're going to move on to the Business Committee report. Member Westholm, if you would take that away.
Okay. First, the number one, Financial Report. The always interesting letter F, we still, we don't, are going to get our first WADAM projections in October, and of course, that's finally when things will settle down, and we'll get some more accurate numbers on how many kids are in our schools. So I'm going to go to Member Hanson. The rest of Financial Report, is there anything in particular that you'd like to bring to our attention on that? Number one.
Go ahead, Member Hanson.
Oh, what did I say?
Did you want this one?
Yes, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, anything in particular, number one, most of it was little things about any particular item, but anything you want to bring to our attention?
Nothing, nothing exceptional, no.
Okay. All right, then we go to number two, Bids, RFPs, and Quote Reports, and, and we, we have one quote, and, and that, again, was something I'm not sure we're going to get a lot of real specific stuff tonight, but for quotes related to the 10-Year Capital Facilities Plan 2015 update, anything new to bring up in that?
Yeah, we have, that was there as a placeholder, and we are... Yeah, we have, uh, that was there as a placeholder, and we are, we do not need that tonight. We don't have anything to bring to you on short notice.
Okay, and when, when are we likely to get, uh, more, more information on that?
It, that's only there for, uh, in case we had anything, uh, come up right before the meeting and, uh, that we needed to, you know, get your action on.
Okay.
And, uh, and again, nothing came up, and so we don't need it. And you'll probably, you'll see the same placeholder there again next month in case we need it.
Okay, uh, number three, policies and regulations. I don't think we had anything new in this, uh, month. Number four, contracts, change orders and leases. We've got a few things here. Uh, nothing under contracts, but change orders. Uh, we got number one, Ordine East Middle School slash Lakewood Elementary School. Uh, for site improvements, we have, uh, uh, an add-on of eight hundred dollars, and it's recommended that we approve that change order. And then B, or number two, is a placeholder. Change orders, again, related to long-range facilities plan, and, and again, we have nothing there. So, then that brings us to C, leases. Again, there was nothing, uh, this month's report on leases. Uh, number five, we have resolutions, and we do have, uh, four resolutions, and I think we need a vote on, okay, let's, let's do the resolutions then. First one is A, B nine fifteen thirty-two ninety-eight. Resolution entering into a joint powers agreement with the State of Minnesota slash Purbridge Center for Arts Education, and it's recommended that we approve resolution B nine fifteen thirty-two ninety-eight.
Okay, so, okay, that's been seconded by Member Murneke. So, can we vote on that right now? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution B nine dash fifteen dash thirty-two ninety-eight, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six-zero. And would you continue?
Okay, resolution B, B dash nine dash fifteen dash thirty-two ninety-nine, authorize the count signers. This is a yearly thing that we, that we do and, and who, who in the schools can be an account signer, and it's recommended the Duluth School Board approve resolution B dash nine dash fifteen dash thirty-two ninety-nine.
Been seconded by Member Murneke. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution B nine dash fifteen dash thirty-two ninety-nine, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries also six-zero. Okay, continue, Member Westholm.
Okay, C, B dash nine dash fifteen dash thirty-three hundred, maximum levy certification, and it's recommended Duluth School Board approve resolution B dash nine dash fifteen dash thirty-three hundred.
Okay, that's been seconded by Member Murneke also. Is there any discussion? Uh, Member Welty?
Yes, I intend to vote for this, but I do have a question. Uh, do we have a sense yet, uh, what the maximum lev- levy will be, or are we still waiting for financial and economic and tax data for that before we can see that and compare it to last year's maximum levy?
Uh, the information that I distributed to board members yesterday would still be the same today, and that reflects, uh, and again, all of this is in a state of flux, and so it's very draft at this point. Uh, but the current number reflects a, uh, an increase of one point four percent, or about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from, uh, last year's levy. And I would tell you that we continue to get, uh, MDE is, we've talked about that, uh, they got a late start on that this year because of the special session in the summertime. Um, and they're still working to resolve some things, uh, on our reports that we get. So, um, more than any other year even, I would caution you that this is all in a state of flux, but those are the way the numbers are, are pointing right now.
Thank you. Uh, Member Johnston?
Uh, yeah, I'm just doing quick figuring. That looks like our, you know, our maximum levy may be around the thirty-three point three million.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. I know we talked about, there's gonna be some discussion, uh, politically that, uh, that they would be maybe shifting some of the school funding from the state over to more local funding. Uh, but at this point, you don't know if there'd be any, that's the best number we've got now. Uh, any of the other discussion, any of that, any idea if you think any of that will shift more over to, uh, local property taxes, or just give me your, read your tea leaves on that if you could.
Well, the, I can, uh, again, in the information that I distributed, I know from the, uh, session with the, the Department of Ed that we went to, um, they handed out information that their anticipated, uh, average increase for school districts was nine point nine percent. Uh, so as you can see, we're well below that. Uh, but again, we're in a state of flux. None of this is final yet. Um, we did see some shifting from, uh, that actually increased some of the general fund levies, uh, but then there was intentional, uh, particularly, uh, some aid that we used to get in addition to the levy, um, that is now being reflected in a reduction of debt service levies. Um, so, we've seen some switching back and forth, but that's, when you look at the bottom line, I think that's certainly part of that benefit of the session was showing up in our bottom-line number of one point four percent.
Why, why were we at one point four, and the average across the state is nine point nine? What was the difference that we had?
I think part of the anticipation there, um, again, follows up on part of the discussion we had at the Business Committee meeting. Uh, Mr. Leiter shared with you about the changes in the, um, what previously was the alt-facilities, um, levy, and, uh, now the expansion of that to apply to virtually every school district, and comes under a new name, long-term facilities maintenance or management. Um, and so the, uh, I think part of the expectation of the nine point nine, uh, was, uh, additional participation by many other districts in that area. It's my own guesstimate there, 'cause I don't have any detail on how they come up to their number.
Yeah, and people that are listening, I think you're referring to like the ten-year plan money. We've always had a ten-year plan thanks to the work that you've been doing. And we've, we've alr- we've already levied for that, and other districts haven't done that, and all they're going to, is that kinda part of what you're saying?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. And again, I wanna commend our group for having that in place for the last quite a few years, I believe, so that's, that's good. I'm probably gonna be voting against this just because, um, uh, the last year where this was the highest levy we had, this year it's gonna be another highest levy we've had. And compared back in two thousand and one, we had an eight million dollar levy. Now, we're up to, gonna be up to thirty-three point three million dollars. Uh, been a pretty significant increase since then, and I, I would like to, um, I just don't like blankly going along, and let's do the maximum here considering the, um, quite large increases that we've had over the last, uh, five years. Uh, we've increased fourteen million, and, um, again, a lot more over the last fifteen years.
Member Westholm?
Yeah, looking at the, at the resolution itself, and I don't know, maybe I should've read this one here. Should I? Okay, um, but a couple of things to note. Um, in, in the resolution, it, it says that, that the board will hold a meeting on December fifteenth, and will receive input from the public at that time on the proposed levy. And then the resolution, uh, we are, and we talked about this at, at, uh, the Business Committee meeting last week, but we propose the ceiling at the maximum amount. And we do that because we may not need it, but if we don't, and all of a sudden we discovered we needed that, we'd be in a, in a bad situation. So, that's why we're going refer right now, uh, maximum amount.
And again, as a reminder to all board members, pardon my contribution here, um, as it works for us, uh, MDE is still in the process of providing the numbers. They have until the end of the month to do that, uh, and so, nothing's finalized for us. If you, uh, specified a particular number tonight, then anything that would happen after tonight would not be eligible to be included, uh, in any, you know, way, shape or form. So, um, it's, again, the action that, uh, the Department of Education represents because of the timing of school district, uh, levy work compared to cities and counties, it's all different.
Thank you. Member Welty?
Yes, I'll, I'll support this tonight, but, uh, it is provisional because the December date is the point at which we actually nail down what our levy will be. And I appreciate that there's some uncertainty, so we don't know what the maximum could be. Um, but most likely, even in December, I will probably support having close to a maximum levy. And the reason is this, and, and I say this with a certain amount of, uh, chagrin. I, I have been going door-to-door, and I've been talking to an awful lot of people who, who just feel that they're getting socked big time, especially the, the senior citizens with, uh, tax increases everywhere, which, to which the school district has, uh, has, has participated in the past. Um, but I'm thinking in terms of that seven-period day that we keep kind of nibbling at and talking about, and I see what could be four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that might give us an option to extend, uh, beyond, uh, the, the zero hour, and perhaps give us a, a, an opportunity, should we combine that with some of the other monies to, to address this equity issue that is so much on people's minds right now.
I'm glad you said that, Member Welty, because we do have to pay for things when we want to add seven-period days in that. Um, Member Johnston?
Sure, two real quick comments. Uh, you know, the, the board, we could've went on a percent. I see other school districts, they'll say ninety-five percent. That's rather than a hard number. Ninety-five percent is very easily workable, if we would've wanted to, which I don't see any, uh, any, any feeling here to do that. But one thing I did mention in the committee meeting, I wanna reemphasize again, that, uh, the December fifteenth meeting is when, when we will be officially doing that. If you could provide us with information as far ahead of time and in the, in between now and then, as the things go, so we know, uh, exactly, and get some time to discuss that before the December fifteenth meeting. I'm sure we will, but just to wanna emphasize again how important it is to get that data to us as much as we can and have, uh, discussions ahead of that. Um, it used to be called what truth in taxation here. I'd like to certainly get that ahead of time. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna vote on resolution B nine dash fifteen dash thirty-three hundred. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries five-one. And then, Member Westholm, would you continue with the next resolution, the last one?
Okay, that is, uh, D, acceptance of donations. Uh, B dash nine dash fifteen dash thirty-three oh one, it's recommended that we approve that, this. And looking at the donations, there's nothing, uh, out of the ordinary with, with, uh, the donations, at least that I see, so.
Okay, that's been seconded by Member Murneke. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution B nine dash fifteen dash thirty-three oh one, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries, um, six-zero. And, Member Westholm, if you would just complete the Business Committee report.
Okay, E, placeholder sale of property. And I think, again, there's nothing, uh, right now on that. And, and we have several information items, uh, expenditure contracts, revenue contracts, none, other contracts, uh, things that Superintendent Grandseth or CFO has, have signed, facilities management, capital project status report, contract sign in relation to the LRFP, and so, and then some future items. And, of course, those are future items, so that, that is the-
So, you would move the rest of the report?
Yes.
Okay, and Member Murneke is seconding, seconding again. Um, are there any items to be discussed? Member Johnston?
One A.
One A. That's it? Oh, Member Lefler Kemp?
Just have a comment about six A.
Six A? Okay, I will go to Mr. Johnston for one A.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I usually bring this up because I think it's a very important issue. Uh, again, we are having and paying more and more legal fees. They're rolling in every month. Uh, this year we've spent two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in legal fees just the last year. Since, uh, the board and superintendent decided to go after me a year and a half ago, we've, we've given a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars to, uh, Kevin Rupp, the attorney. Uh, both of these numbers are the highest ever by far that we've ever paid on attorney fees. I mean, by far, we're probably three or four times what we've paid on attorney fees, except for things like, if you don't count the things like bonding and, uh, audits and whatnot. Uh, and, of course, this is not all of it. We have more fees coming in. They have to do with the, uh, the boards and the superintendent's attempt to remove me, uh, still coming in, so there's certainly more to come. The insurance, I've asked information on, to get that. Don't know if I'll get that. But, you know, two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars is a lot of money. All this went, didn't go after, going after me, but it's certainly a good share of it did. And, uh, but that's, you know, five teachers. Uh, that's, that's very significant. Uh, if this continues in the future, it's another five teachers, not just this year, but every year after this. And I think that, uh, again, this is not acceptable. I, I used to talk to the superintendent saying that we were paying too much in the past on the attorney fees. Uh, this was, um, a boon for attorneys this year, uh, completely unacceptable, completely absolutely no benefit to this district, absolutely none. Uh, last month I did ask the superintendent about it. He said he didn't really know anything about it. Well, the superintendent is responsible for this, and I want this excess money to stop going out and put money into the education, the classrooms. If we're gonna go through and talk about, uh, increasing our levy, and we have money like this going out for nothing, absolutely nothing, is not acceptable, and the superintendent is responsible.
I think I won't say anything to that. Okay, Member Lefler Kemp, I'm gonna have you go six A, the expenditure contracts. You had a question about that?
I just, um, it's really more, again, a comment on page thirty-two, and, and for the public, we, we list, uh, where we expend some money, and I, I always enjoy reading about this, um, some of the, the ways we're spending money, particularly when it has to do with, um, staff training. And so, I just wanted to point out, um, some of the really great things that our, our staff are being trained on. Uh, and page thirty-three talks about the Purbridge Grant. I'd encourage you to look at that. That's around arts training. Uh, page thirty-nine talks about resti- resti- uh, restorative learning program, which is staff development dealing with, um, working with our at-risk learners, anti-bullying, um, and, and so, really excited that our staff are being trained in that area. And then, on page forty, um, uh, there was an in-service called creating a culture of achievement for all using evidence-based interventions. And, again, I think some good training has happened as we get into the school year, and, um, I just wanted to highlight that. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we're gonna vote on the rest of the Business Committee report, excluding the resolutions. All those in favor of the, the rest of the Business Committee report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries five-one with Member Johnston voting against it. And we don't have any special resolutions, and we are at eight seventeen. I'm going to adjourn this meeting.